So let's go ahead and transition. And I'll call to order our May 11th, 2020, to all the city council meeting. And I welcome everyone on Zoom to our meeting. We're getting better and better with these meetings every week or every couple of weeks. I bet city staff is real good at it because they're doing them daily. So, welcome. And the first thing on our agenda is public comments. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here in Zoom land or at the poll center who would like to address the council, this would be an appropriate time. And I'm aware of one gentleman, Gary, I think he's here, correct? From Clackamas County?
I am here.
All right. So Gary represents the National Alliance on Mental Illness in Clackamas County. Gary reached out to ask for a proclamation recognizing May as National Mental Health Issues Month. Due to lack of time, I did make that proclamation as a mayoral proclamation. But he'd like a few minutes to discuss why it's important and why it's super important to the residents of Clackamas County. Gary?
Okay, well, sure, this is just be the perfect time that my phone would decide or my, I think would decide that it wants to do a different screen. There we are. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Gary Marsky and I work for the National Alliance on Mental Illness in Clackamas County. Just weeks ago, we had no idea that our worlds were going to be turned upside down by the coronavirus or that the associated worry, isolation, loneliness and anxiety would be something that literally everyone would experience. May is Mental Health Month and it's never been more important than this year. Anxiety, depression, trauma and substance abuse are all on the rise and huge increases in unemployment increase the risk of suicide, which in Oregon, by the way, is the number one cause of death among young people ages 10 to 24. So social isolation, financial distress, fears about health and an uncertain future are all fueling mental health epidemic along with the COVID-19 pandemic. One in five or 60 million people in the United States face day-to-day reality of living with a mental illness. That's 5,193 people right here in Toowalatin. And every American is affected by their, through their friends and family, especially during a global pandemic. And we know it will continue far into the future as people deal with a truly traumatic event and the financial fallout that'll follow. Connection, support and advocacy are more important now than ever before. There is power in starting a conversation, being informed and knowing the right thing to say and becoming involved as we fight stigma and the discrimination that comes with it and work for access to effective quality mental health services here in Toowalatin, in Clackamas County and throughout the United States. Mental Health Month is a time for all of us to come together to inspire people, raise awareness and become involved so we can build better lives for millions of people with mental illness. We're asking everyone to join with us and say, I'm into mental health. NAMI Clackamas is saying it by making 15 online support groups available to anyone regardless of where you live or how you identify. We're saying it by offering all of our signature classes, peer-to-peer, family-to-family and basics for parents of young children online. We're saying it by offering parents and loved ones of young students ending the silence for families online. We're saying it by presenting a monthly Ask the Expert with relevant credible information about ways to cope with the current circumstance. We're saying it through our compassion committee of volunteers making calls to those in need of connection and support. We're saying it to our peer resource coordinator who's available to assist with navigating the often complex system of referrals and resources. And we're saying it to our annual friend and fundraiser, NAMI Walks, which goes virtual this year. We want everyone to know they're not alone on this journey and together we have hope. And Mental Health Month is an opportunity to take action. Each of us can learn more, we can provide support for those in need, advocate for equal care and fight the stigma and discrimination faced every day by people with mental health disorders. We can celebrate Mental Health Month by joining a NAMI Walk Your Way virtual event or creating your own event to improve the lives of people with mental health condition. People are doing everything from walking around the house to virtual karaoke parties, live streamed and shared, starting at 11:00 AM. Event registration information is available at www.namiwalks.org/northwest. We can, you can also like, follow and share content from NAMI Clackamas on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram and other social media. Challenge your own stigma and discrimination as well as challenging others when you see it. Tell your own story about mental illness and share your lived experience with others who feel alone. And of course, you can always share your time and perhaps your dollars with NAMI Clackamas and other mental health organizations that will ensure that there's funding and access for people to get the help that they need when and where they need it. And of course, you can always tell someone in need about NAMI. After all, mental health is not for some, it's for all and it doesn't discriminate. So finally, there are lots of ways that everyone can be supportive of friends, family and coworkers who are struggling with life's challenges or their mental health and let them know that they're not alone. You can find reliable information and resources to share as well as opportunities to engage at www.namicc.org, which I had a slide to share, but, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council for making this proclamation and recognizing that Mental Health Month is for all of us because it affects all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. So one of the things when, when you say NAMI, just so people know, so that's www.namiic.org. If you want to go there, the perfect website with all the stuff that Gary was just talking about and discussing the support that we need during this tough time. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Gary? Bridgette?
Hi, Gary, thank you for joining us tonight and thank you for your work you're doing with NAMI. As a clinical social worker, I've had the good fortune, it's a national organization, National Association of Mental Illness. So my first experience with working with folks from NAMI was back in the Detroit, Michigan area. And the, the thing that I find the most, that I found really wonderful about the organization, just for people to know is not only do you guys serve those suffering with mental health issues, but you also serve their families. It's one of the best support groups and informational groups for the support systems and the family systems and the friend systems around people that are suffering with mental health issues. And you guys do an amazing job with advocacy because there's a lot of issues and we can all see it now with financial and other things that happen with health. When I was a clinician, my main group of folks were people that developed mental health issues after having severe health issues. And now when we have a global pandemic, there are going to be many more people that are traumatized by their health issues happening or economic issues happening. And the difference between acting, being aware, doing the things that you talked about and cutting short something and treating something so that it doesn't evolve into severe persistent mental illness is so important. And at the same time, there are a lot of genetic factors and a lot of factors that contribute to people having long-term severe persistent mental illness that they suffer with that it's great the way that you raise awareness, advocate, support and treat. So I just want to say thank you very much. And I also have a question with you doing more things virtually. I'm wondering with access issues and things like that, if you think that as we move through this crisis in the future, that there may be a new normal for services afterwards that help keep some virtual things going for people that have trouble with accessing in place. And thank you again, thank you, Mayor, also for declaring the proclamation.
So I can answer that question, I think, to the best of my ability. I strongly believe that this is the new normal, that we will be seeing virtually all of our services provided online as well as in person. You know, there's a certain element that missed, that's missing from online, just as we all are painfully aware of these days. So we do miss that. However, I think the most important thing, especially in a time of crisis like this, is to push out the information first. All right, if we can get the camaraderie, we can get the face-to-face, the sharing of those experiences in the same room, all the better. But we really need to push out the information and that's really what, what I think we're in the process of doing wholesale now. And we will continue to do that, I think, on an ongoing basis regardless.
Thank you. And, and then I just think also just for access, you know, some people struggle in so many different ways. And to be able to just check into a meeting and get support from your own living room. I am a big face-to-face person as well, but I just think that there's, there's so many access issues. So it's just, I think it's helpful. So anyway, thank you very much again for your work.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Gary, for reaching out to me and asking about the proclamation. I hope you made your goal of having every city in Clackamas County declare this month as Mental Health Month. And thanks for bringing attention to your organization.
Well, and thank you, you have gotten us that much closer to unanimity throughout Clackamas County and having it be a proclamation. So we're, we're getting there. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Gary.
Okay, bye-bye now.
Bye-bye. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council tonight? Oh, looks like Valerie has something to say.
Okay.
I'm not leaving then.
I just, I just wanted to make a suggestion. Somebody does a great job of posting activities in Toowalatin on our Facebook page, our city's Facebook page. And I think this proclamation and links to access this organization would be a great idea.
Yeah. Make sure I can figure that out. All right.
All right, so before I jump off, anybody else?
Going once, going twice? All right.
Thank you, Gary. Be safe.
You too. Okay, next up is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine, they'll be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of two items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular remaining minutes of April 27th, 2020. And item two, consideration of resolution number 5491-20, authorizing the purchase of right-of-way and easements for the construction of the Garden Corner Curves project.
More to move to accept the consent agenda?
I have a motion second to accept the consent agenda spread. Any questions on that? Go ahead and start the roll call, start with Valerie.
Hi.
Bridgette?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Maria?
Yes.
Robert?
Hi.
Paul?
Yeah.
Come on, Paul, some more excited. Awesome. All right. So moving on to the next items, reports. Item number one, Toowalatin Moving Forward Quarterly Update. This Jeff?
It is Jeff and Megan, I see Megan there as well. So I just have to say, I am super excited about this, this update. And so Jeff, take it away.
All right, so I'm going to try and share my screen with you. So bear, bear with me for just one second. Make sure I get the right one here. All right, can you see that?
Yes.
Great. So good evening, Mayor and Council. I guess we're getting used to this Zoom thing. It's not quite the same as being there in person, but hopefully it'll give me some excuses for making mistakes. So, so it's, so tonight, we're gonna, we're here to provide you with our quarterly update on the Toowalatin Moving Forward Bond Program. We're going to briefly talk about upcoming construction projects planned for the summer. There's a bunch of them. Ongoing design and planning work, provide updates on several projects, provide an overall update on the program's schedule and budget. And then talk about upcoming work and a bunch of the communication and public outreach things that we're doing now that we are working from home. So let's see if this is going to go. There we go. Hold on just a second, sorry about that, I'm having some technical difficulties on my AM, but it's catching up. So, so we are, despite COVID-19 disruptions, the bond team's not slowing down. So we're, we're all meeting virtually. This is a picture of one of our meetings. We've got a couple of guests were at that meeting. So we're continuing to finalize plans for construction this summer. And we are spending a lot of time designing and planning our next wave of construction projects. We'll talk about those a little bit more tonight as well. And then we're, Megan's going to spend some time in the presentation talking about how we're adjusting our outreach to really just reflect kind of our new reality that we're, we're living in with COVID-19. So this summer, we have a bunch of projects under construction. So there's nine projects. Two of those actually started construction this week or last week, they should be done by next week. And that's the driver feedback sign on Martin Assi and the RRFB on Mohawk over by PGE. So those two are well underway, the contractors are out there getting them installed as quickly as they can. And so those will be done soon. The next project out of the gate for us will be the Boons Ferry, the high school project. So that one is combined with our payment maintenance program that is on on Boons Ferry as well. I'm trying to see if I can see folks. And so, so those two projects are starting right after the, right after the Fourth of July. And then Garden Corner Curves will be following right behind that one. So currently, we've got five projects that are still being designed. And so they, this is kind of our next wave of construction projects that you'll start seeing next summer. So we're finishing up design on Martin Assi Sagert Intersection, TS Road and Martin Assi, working with ODOT on that one. Same thing with 99W, Pony Ridge, 124th, 95th and Avery. So we got a really good start in that one and then we paused until the fall because we kind of need folks to be in school. So we have people to talk to about what that project should look like. So we've done a bunch of work on that, done some traffic analysis, a fair bit of public outreach. And then the next step is to come back after school starts again in the fall and talk with the PTA and the neighbors around that area and, and get that movie again. So this is a in your, in your staff report, there was a three-page version of this schedule. So this shows the, the overall program, the first page showed kind of what we've done to date. This page, second page is what we're doing now. So this is, you can see all the projects we have going on and, and I don't know if you can see my mouse or not, but 2020, there's a ton of activity. And then the third page are those projects that will be starting after this wave of projects. This slide shows just an overall picture of our budget. So we've built about a half million dollars of projects. We've got, spent about 2.2 million in design and getting these nine projects ready to hit the street. There's about 9.3 million underway that's not spent. And then future projects, there's about eight million that we'll be starting spending on next year. So that's a, just a really big picture version of the budget. In your staff report, we included an updated quarterly report card. So that gives really project-specific information on, on the budgets for each one of the projects. And then those are based on milestone dates. So what'll happen next quarter, when you see the report, is we will have nine of the projects will know really good cost estimates based on the construction bids. So we'll update it to reflect those costs. So this is the first, we've got three projects we're going to talk about tonight and give brief updates, status updates. So Garden Corner Curves, this project's been a long time coming, many, many years, in fact. We are really close to starting construction on this one. Tonight, in fact, on the consent agenda that you approved, there was the property purchase for the right-of-way needed to construct this project. We've talked about this a lot, but it's pretty exciting. It provides significant safety improvements in the Garden Corner Curves area, 105th Blake and 108. It will have a new shared-use bike path for bikes and peds to get them off the roadway. Flashing beacons at Moratac and Blake and 108. A raised crossing at the corner there where folks come around the corner too fast, sometimes leave the road and hit the brick wall. So this should, should help with that. Driver feedback signs again to get people to slow down. Some change, some new lighting out there was not listed on here as we've been working with the utilities. So PGE is going to underground their lines. And so all those above-ground lines that you see out there, power and communications will be underground. And that is, they should start working that fairly soon. We have all the permits in hand, property purchase, we talked about tonight on consent. And we are really close, 99, say 99% on plans. Mike McCarthy, our transportation engineer is doing the final review to get those out the door. So we should see that one, start construction probably in July. Excuse me, the next project we talked about a little bit, Boons Ferry at the high school. So this one is combined with our payment maintenance program. It just happened to be that we were going to be out there this year overlaying Boons Ferry in front of the high school. And so we combined these two, two projects together for construction. This project replaces or actually infills a sidewalk that's across the street from the high school. So there's a pretty big sidewalk gap there. And then it builds a crossing at Alabama with rapid flashing beacons. One other piece of this project that's already happened is we made some signal modifications at the intersection of Ibaka and Boons Ferry. And that was in response to some, some scary near misses with people turning right off of Ibaka onto Boons Ferry. So we modified that signal, gave the pedestrians a leading interval to allow them to start crossing before the cars go. And that's really helped that. So I think the work we've done plus the work we're going to do this summer will make that area much, much safer for pedestrians. So, and that project should start right after the Fourth of July. Graham's Ferry Road at Dogwood Street. So this is another project that's another crosswalk. So Dog, or Graham's Ferry is a county road. So we've been working with the county closely to meet their standards and get this project approved by them. So we submitted our final set of plans addressing all their comments. We're waiting for feedback from them. And this project should also start within the next few weeks. So I'm going to get, I don't know that I'll get tired of saying that, but you're going to hear that a lot from me. This project should start within the next few weeks because we have so many projects hitting the ground this summer. And now Megan is going to talk about all the stuff we're doing to keep people informed.
Yeah, all right. So one of the things that we did when COVID hit was pause and take a look at the way we were doing business. And we came up with a set of operating principles to inform how we approached continuing to do work. And one of those operating principles was to continue with public engagement in creative ways. So we took a look at the list of tools that we use in order to inform the public, talk to the public, hear your feedback from the public. And you can see that list down below and pulled out a few items that were no longer possible or feasible or safe. And then beefed up some of our other options. So some of the things that we're looking at doing now, which we might not have otherwise done, are webinars, virtual neighborhood meetings, or increasing the use of social media, continuing our efforts with yard signs in Toowalatin today. And then a lot of just one-on-one contact with people who are interested and informed about those projects. Stuff that we've already done, stuff that we'll continue to do include those kitchen table meetings, door hangers, open houses, community meetings and in-person meetings. But for the moment, those are all on hold. And so this slide should look pretty familiar to you. And the reason for that is because we're, we're still doing everything that we were planning on doing. We did decide to extend the sidewalk art contest for, we noticed that there may be some more youth at home with ample free time than otherwise would be. So we extended the sidewalk art contest so that there was additional opportunities. We're in the midst of soliciting project suggestions for the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Program. People should have received a postcard in the mail last week or early this week. And we're promoting that on social media as well. So we're asking for as many suggestions as possible for projects throughout the city. And as Jeff stated earlier, we're continuing with project design and permitting whenever possible. And a lot of this depends, a lot of our public engagement work depends on where we were at with projects that were already underway. So if we had made contact with people and developed relationships, it's easier to continue with those relationships and continue communicating, particularly if we'd already identified ways to do that for projects that were, were not quite as far along or hit speed bumps for whatever reason, we've made the choice to put a pause button on those things. But right now, we're comfortable moving forward with the design and permitting for, for those projects that are listed in the rest of the program. Next slide. And this is our summary slide. So we've been joking as we've all adjusted to work from home. So too has Uma, the dog. We've been using her as somewhat of our mascot for the bond program. So we, in past months, we've been able to promote photos of her out at our projects. Now we're promoting her as a member on Zoom meetings and on her computer doing research and with maps and plans. So I think that does our presentation. So if there are any questions. Jeff, we can probably stop sharing the screen.
Trying to see all the little slides. See Paul's finger up, there it is. Great, Paul.
Yeah, thank you. Great presentation and I'm going to repeat that, I've said this multiple times, I'm going to repeat it again. The Graham's Ferry Dogwood Crosswalk literally brings me to tears, knowing the history of the amazing effort we got from Aquila to help us get started on that when we were told that Washington County wouldn't allow a crosswalk. The amazing effort by Counselor, well, then CIO President, Counselor Kellogg and his determination to figure out a way to make that happen. And again, and I, it was a single homeowner showing up at a HOA meeting who wanted to know why there couldn't be a crosswalk there that started that whole process going and highlighted the, the need for one there that had been there for a long time for a variety of reasons and how that's finally getting done. And then second, Jeff, if you ever, you know, need something, if someone says, what miracle did you ever perform? You can tell them that you performed a miracle at the intersection of Ibaka and Boons Ferry Road because it's not just the cars turning right onto Boons Ferry Road that was causing disaster. If you remember, Beth Roach sent a letter a long time ago because it was her son who almost got hit by a car turning right on Boons Ferry onto Ibaka Road as well, same, under the same principle. It was just, it was blind spots. And that has been just an amazing job that you did there on that intersection with, with what you did. And thank you very much.
Others? Nobody? All right. I'll, not because I, yeah, I just want to, again, a big shout out to staff and Jeff and his crew. Talking to other mayors, I've said this before, other mayors are pretty envious how well this program has gone. Starting from when we informed the community of the need to fund the bond program and it was residents voted on it and in favor of it and how well the projects have gone so far and how accountable we are, how they get to see the status constantly what's going on. It's rare that government agency has this level of accountability. And I hear about it all the time when I talk to all of our electeds and people in the know saying this is a project that is almost to be duplicated, if you will, as far as public involvement and transparency. So Sherilyn and the whole crew, staff, Jeff, Megan, terrific job on this. And very confident that we're going to hit all our marks and all the commitments we made. I think we're going to hit and the community is going to see how well the city is run. And ideally, most of these projects will have the impact we envisioned. Anything else?
I'll, can I, I'll say something too. I just wanted to say thanks for all the work on it and, and to keep everything moving forward during this time. It's, you know, it says a lot. And, and I know a lot of people have worked on this a lot longer than I've, I've even been around. But the traffic is the number one issue here. And to make progress like this on this. And to make progress like this on this is so encouraging. And then, you know, of all the, the silver linings in this COVID situation to have construction and things going on when traffic's light and to be able to build in efficiencies right now is at least one piece of good news. So I'm really glad that we're on track and under budget and all those things. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I've seen the towns around, I've seen the signs around town. It's nice to see those instead of all the political signs. At least your color scheme isn't like a political sign, so it stands out. Anyone else?
Well, I just want to say again, thank you for your support and it really means a lot to have your support during this time. And we just feel really good about the moving forward with all the construction and keeping our consultants just on their A game and moving forward. So thank you.
Perfect. Thanks Megan and Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I am number two, Annual Report of the Tuolatin Historical Society. I believe this is Ross Baker and Larry McClure, correct? Yeah, Ross Hoover, right?
Well, Ross Hoover can say something if he wants to, but I'm going to take the lead and let Ross jump in when I'm finished and he can criticize me. Larry's my wing guy. Uh, this is my first time doing this, not Zoom, but my first time making the presentation to City Council. Thank you very much to the city for giving us the opportunity to present uh, what we've been up to the last year. And I think you all can see what I'm seeing now.
Yes.
Okay, let me get to the beginning. Uh, we're going to fly through this rather quickly out of respect for the limited time budget that you have and that we've been given. We've worked, of course, closely with Julie and Julie Littman and Ross Hoover and Rich Mueller during the last, uh, Mueller, I'm sounding like a German now, Mueller, um, last year. Some of the things that we've done, uh, project wise, uh, include new things like Viva Tuolatin and also some of the traditions that we have, like our annual scholarship, which is now at three thousand dollars. Uh, our, we're the Galbraith Wagon, we're very proud of. It's on display at Lee Farms while we work with the city on someplace maybe to put it closer. We'll see how that goes. Uh, we're really thrilled about the native plants that we have now in our patio planters. We've removed all the non-native stuff except for six or seven things which are pioneer related. And I'll mention that later. And of course, our pioneer days, which unfortunately we had to cancel this year. Uh, we have lots of new exhibits that you'll be able to see someday, especially some families we've picked out and put on the walls there. And, um, we're working on those in the background even while we're closed. Uh, some of the programs we had during the year, I'm not going to go through all these, but one of the, some of the ones that we've gotten really great feedback on include Geological Tour of the Columbia Valley, Linda Mulholland, who most of you of course know her, and the History of Business in Tuolatin. Another great fun event was Peter Burnett, an author we've had back a number of times talking about, I'm sorry, the, the title of the, the president, his program was The Troubled Life of Oregon Pioneer Peter Burnett. He was a real character. Uh, Joe Meek was another one we did, Scott Burns, who's always popular at the Historical Society. This was a real interesting twist comparing the geology of Iceland to Tuolatin. Lois Martin Azzi, always a hit, she's one of our co-founders. We actually had a Tuolatin one-on-one, um, training session and we had a game show afterwards. And that was a lot of fun for the members. And from the, our participation in Viva Tuolatin, we're already starting to reap fruits from that. Goals are Ahmed, you can see there toward the bottom of my slide. Uh, we had an opportunity to, uh, interview him during our participation at, uh, Viva Tuolatin where we did oral histories. And, uh, he's already made a presentation about his success moving from Pakistan to Tuolatin so many years ago. And of course, our Christmas program was brand new this year. It was very popular. There's our membership in a glance, membership overall from nineteen to twenty was fairly flat. From eighteen to nineteen, we had a nice big jump. What we were proud of this past year was our multi-year members. We had a nice increase of about a third from the people who sign up for more than one year. Approximately ten thousand visitors walked through the doors. Um, and we had about a hundred and seventy volunteer hours per month at the Heritage Center and went in the activities and the programs that we do, uh, with the Historical Society. There's a quick look at our budget. I would say that that's only three quarters of the, uh, of the fiscal year. We follow the same fiscal year as the city. You can see there our revenue was about sixty-seven percent of what we had expected. Uh, however, our expenses were fifty-seven percent of what we expected. It's something we spend a lot of time on during every board meeting, making sure we keep it uh, in line. It'll be in the packet that'll be available to you if you want to dig into those numbers. What you see there is what we're holding as of the end of March. It hasn't changed too much. It's a little bit over eighty-one thousand dollars. It includes three thousand for the scholarship which is set aside. And there down at the bottom of the page are some of the major expenses we expect to have during this year. Or we did expect to have as of Q1, we'll see how the year unfolds. We're really proud of the work we do with the Ice Age Flood Institute. They are now also a five oh one three C. We're proud because it was really, it is, one of the three legs of the stools that the Historical Society sits on. We're focused on our pioneers and of course, on the first peoples. And as the Ice Age gets their own voice and their own way, uh, we're going to have to work with them to hand over information and articles that we have and stuff. But they're really with people like Robert Kellogg and Linda Mulholland, Rick Thompson, Yvonne Eddington, all Historical Society members. They're really rolling that out quite successfully and we hope that that works out well for them. I couldn't let my few minutes of fame go unnoticed without talking about a couple of people we're really proud of. Norm Parker, who got the President's Award this year, um, and Sandra Lathke Carlson, who got the Lathke Martin Azzi Award. Um, one way you can look at that with regard to the President's Award is that's kind of outside stuff, you know, the voice in the community. And then Lathke Martin Azzi Award is more inside focused. What have you done to make us more successful at the Historical Society? And so I really had to give them a few seconds. I had to give a couple of these slides to COVID nineteen. We've been busy, we've been trying to stay busy, even though we haven't been able to have our programs. Uh, we've challenged school age kids to keep a log, including photos um, on this whole thing because we're going to put them into our archives that the public can see. And so we've reached out to them and we're sending some reminders. We have a walking map which, um, we developed a couple of years ago with the help of, of Meridian Park Hospital, their funding, and so that's available. We put it on next door and also sending it to members as required. We had to cancel our Women Suffrage, uh, program. So we just sent a link out to all the members instead of, uh, something about that. One thing we're planning for May because we're not going to be able to have our Memorial Day program is a survey to the members who are or know people who lived or lived or live in Tuolatin, who served in the military. It's kind of a harvesting, harvesting of information. And we want to put that into our archives too, of anybody who lives locally, who has served in any capacity. One thing we're excited about is starting a plant fostering program. We over have over here on the left, uh, these historical plants, which are important to the history of Tuolatin because they came over the sea or they came over the Oregon Trail to our town. And we want these to be in more places than just the Heritage Center in case we have, I don't know, catastrophe. Some poison is sprayed there to get rid of weeds. And so we're going to be reaching out to the community in the next weeks to, um, once we finish the details on this plant fostering program to get these plants propagated all around town. Uh, here's some more things going on. We are, uh, uh, close to the public, but Cindy Frost, our manager, is still working ten to three Mondays through Thursday. We committed to her in April that we're going to continue because we have so many projects which are listed down below for her to work on. We did secure PPP funds to help with that. And I need to just point out a couple of these things down below. We're continuing our brick sales. So if you or anybody you know wants to buy a brick with your family name on it or a business name, we're continuing that effort. Uh, we're staying in contact with our renters because they are our largest revenue source. And we've of course lost that, so we're trying to keep in contact with them. Another important thing here down below, we're working on our Tuolatin Heritage Evening for the fall. Um, it is our only major fundraiser and it may be in jeopardy, we'll have to see. Okay. So I think that's all for that page. There's the board. And, um, again, I really want to thank, um, people in the city for working with us, constant interface, whatever we need. Ross Hoover, Julie Littman, um, and then of course, in the past year, Rich Miller. We're really grateful for allowing us to thrive. Thanks.
All right, thanks Ross.
Any questions?
Yes, what I was going to ask, any questions, comments? Maria.
Ross, thank you very much for this presentation. I have been asked by some of the, uh, participants of, um, Viva Tuolatin from last year. Where could they go and hear the, I guess they're, the, um, their story, I think, remember we, they had, um, they recorded themselves talking about how they've been here in Tuolatin for so long and.
Right. Yeah, good question. If you go to our webpage, tuolatinhistoricalsociety.org, over on the left-hand side, you'll see something, basically it says archives. It'll take you to another page and you'll have to, because it's more than just archives, you'll have to click archives again. And then once you're into our online archives, you'll see a file folder called Oral Histories. And for now, we've kept everybody we've interviewed at Viva Tuolatin in a folder called Viva. And, but other than that, it's usually by file name and, I'm sorry, family name. And we're going to be moving them out of that Viva folder under their family name eventually. But for now, it's our webpage archive, again, look for archive, then look for the folder Oral History, then look for, um, Viva Tuolatin and they'll find their name there. Or alternatively, if you just have them send an email to askabouthistory@gmail.com, I will just send them the link so they don't have to remember that, click, 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 I just said.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Valerie.
I, I just want to thank you, you're, um, you know, the Stark Society has been just for years since you moved that Heritage Center and all the things you've done and you're, um, of course, I'm always pleased that you're so fiscally responsible on top of it. But, um, you're just so creative with preserving our history, not just the typical things we would think of, but like with the Viva Tuolatin and stories and now, oh, the thing with the plants is just fantastic. So I just want to, um, thank you very much for all your hard work and the great job you do.
Well, thank you for saying that. And remember, we were the volunteer organization of the year.
I, I want to say thank you to a lot of what Valerie said. Um, I think that the presentation was really informative and helpful to remind me of all the things that you guys are up to and that we're, I'm actually a member that we're up to, but, um, and I enjoy, um, I'm really, really happy about the native plants as well. And I think that, um, this idea of also capturing this time of COVID nineteen and the virus is very brilliant. And, um, it's obvious that it's just such a great group of, um, creative and interested and invested people that help make Tuolatin even more special. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Bridget, Bridget, thank you very much. We have a lot of people have been around a lot longer than me, like my man Larry there. And it's, it's really great. I thank you for saying that.
I might add, by the way, that I think Robert Kellogg has a cutting of that Robin's Rose at home, right, Robert?
Not only that, but about fifteen Lathke irises that came up this spring.
Right, right.
All right, other comments?
Yeah, I just want to jump in, um, and continue to heap praise upon Ross and Larry, your entire Board of Directors. Um, the Historical Society is a treasure. I, I love coming to your programs. I love keeping up with your activities, your fundraisers. Um, I wanted to ask you about, uh, two things. First, I think I noted in the presentation, there's going to be a new edition of Tuolatin from the beginning, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, well, I would put a plug in that to anybody if, uh, you want to learn some, basically everything about the history of Tuolatin. It's in that book and a lot of, uh, wonderful stories. Uh, and second, Ross, on the, uh, Galbraith Wagon and building that shelter. I know we've had some private conversations about it, but is there anything at this point in time that you need from the city or, or have any questions about on that item?
I, I don't think so, um, Councilman Kellogg, the, the city's been working with us. They have a very huge project ahead of them with regard to all of the once fifty-some things when we start improving parks and stuff again, there's lots of stuff on that list. Um, we have a home for it. It's a good home out at Lee Farms where the public can see it. Um, we do hope to move it closer to town someday and I, and I think we're all very sober, um, about the timeline. It could take a year or two for that to happen. I don't, I don't know that, I, I, there is no set timeline. We have to work within the constraints of what the city can do also. Um, but they've been working with us and Rich Mueller and Ross Hoover, and they have been very clear about the process. And, but I, I thank you for asking, but I think we're in good hands. And, um, yeah, I know where you live. Well, actually I don't, but if we need help, we'll holler.
Glad to hear it. Thanks again.
Other comments? I just want to thank Ross for the amount of time he puts into this. He is a very dedicated president and board member. Uh, he puts an unbelievable amount of time and effort and actually volunteer hours and a lot of his free time uh, to make these programs happen, to work with Larry and the rest of the board. I just want to commend him for all he's done for a couple of years there. I was going to the board meetings and, um, sometimes these, the Historical Society folks uh, can be difficult. They have a lot of history in town. Um, they've got a lot of history, they got the knowledge and they want, and they're doing the best for the community because they didn't want things forgotten. They can make it a challenge around the meeting, but Ross, that does it every month and makes these things happen. And I just want to thank you, Ross, for doing that.
Thank you for saying so.
And Larry's laughing because he knows it's true. But it's a great group of people who just the, just the institutional knowledge of the folks on the board is just amazing. And, uh, and getting these, uh, histories done either written or vocally is critically important before, uh, folks pass on. And we lose some of the history that, those little tidbits that Lois knows and Yvonne knows and uh, some of the Lathke family, we don't want to lose those things because it's important.
Well, it's harder to forget that we, we moved that building fourteen years ago. We opened it fourteen years ago. I was actually moved about fifteen years ago.
All right. Well, thanks again. And Ross and Larry, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next up is an annual report from T-Park and I believe that's, Beth is up with Rossers. Beth's doing it her own.
Well, I'm going alone.
All right.
There, I'm a state council member, thanks for having me here tonight. I, um, pleased to come to you from my dining room without my screaming children, so we'll count that as a success. Um, so here to talk with you tonight about T-Park, Tuolatin Park Advisory Committee, and a little bit about what we did in two thousand nineteen, which now feels like eons ago, yeah? Bring to you some of our smiling faces here, Cheryl and Sarah as well. Uh, we are a group of enthusiastic advocates for the park and rec system and we focus on stewardship and enhancement of our community. That's not just our tongue-in-cheek line about who we are, but rather a mission statement we crafted at the end of two thousand eighteen. Um, you'll see there that what we are is a group of seven dedicated volunteers from our community. Um, amongst us who've attended seventeen meetings and hosted or attended six events and committed over two hundred volunteer hours that we only just started tracking in the official system, so you should see us more officially represented next year. Some of the people's names, we won't read them off all to you. Um, I am, I don't know if I'm joined here tonight by any of the other members within our committee. We had big plans, we're very excited to all come to our in-person meeting and we're going to go out for a celebratory. Yay, we did a good year. We're a little bit sad that we aren't going to do that, but we'll add it to the list of things we're collectively grieving right now. Um, we also have, um, Valerie, Councilwoman Pratt, who was a former member of ours. And what we're really most proud of in terms of what we look at in terms of our membership is, and thanks to your help in our appointments, is to see that we are very representative across the areas of Tuolatin, the different CIOs and across different interests and perk. Um, you know, people who represent different perk interests and things that they want to see in parks. And so that's something that we feel really proud of and want to bring to you tonight as well. A little bit about what we do, uh, you probably know these things, but it's good to. A little bit about what we do, you probably know these things, but it's good to refresh our memory and put it in the official public record. We obviously have our monthly meetings and then represent ourselves to you, the council, and also to public. And in that public representation, we go to events and activities. And we also do some public outreach and engagement, involvement, whether, pardon me, to solicit, pardon me, to solicit feedback about what potential things we want to see at parks or improvements at parks. Or for, for example, all going around wearing lighted headbands at Starry Nights to just tell people, hey, we have a parks committee. What do you want to see happen at parks next? We also serve as the official committee or board for both Bee City and the Tree City. So we are bees and trees incarnate for you here. Why what we do is important? Well, at the, at the fundamental basis, what parks are is the backyard of our whole city. And when we think about serving a city and serving a community, the people who need us most are the ones who don't have their actual own very backyard. And so we are the people who are engaging within the community to solicit feedback and get information. We serve you as the council. We see ourselves as an extension of you and specifically people who have an eye and ear for park and park issues. And then we also see ourselves as the people who know what's going on with council so that we can defer and refer that out back to the community members to which we live and serve. We've changed a bit since 2018 when we crafted that lovely vision statement of who we are. And all for the better, as far as I'm concerned. We have definitely a more vision focused and we have a deeper engagement from the group, meaning that we, as Rich, you're on this call, I believe, Rich, I always jokingly say, we don't just receive information from Rich, although Rich is definitely a font thereof. But we like to think that we also are there to learn and engage with what is being, information is being shared with us and then also be directive and collaborative with the process of what's happening next. We really do seek to be a citizen-led group and an active voice for the park and rec system in terms of what we see as that, that important part of our city. And clicking is the only thing that works, not forward arrow, good to know. In 2019, some of our accomplishments were the master plan, state planning awards, the smiling faces you saw at the very beginning, sideholding that award came to us and we were very honored to go and receive that for the master plan work that we did eighteen months prior. We also saw the park system development charge adoption recommendation to you. And you were always very much aware of that happening. We became the Bee City USA certification, or we became certified in USA Bee City. And part of that I five corridor, trying to be more pollinator friendly. Some of us are planting milkweed this spring. I don't know about anyone else. I'm pretty excited about that. We also have joint meeting and collaboration efforts with the Arts Advisory Committee, seeing our work as something where we need to start having the right-hand talks to the left. We saw improvements at Follty, Jergens and the Common Splash Pad, as well as the I-VAC Playground Reservation Project. And then the I-Big Tonkin Trail Easement Acquisition. Where we could have done more, right? We're always thinking where we could go next, not just what we've already done. Obviously, funds, everybody wants more money to do, to see their good ideas put to fruition. But more additional funds could help us. It could help us actualize on a master plan that we spent time and energy soliciting real-time feedback from our citizens in the community. We spent eighteen months soliciting the voice and really prioritizing what those needs were. So what we'd like to do when we find funding, funding is create a more equitable and accessible community space in that backyard of our, of our community. We'd like to create a more environmentally sustainable community as we're seeing a little bit of when we install improved irrigation systems. We'd like to advance the active transportation methods, like pedestrians and biking routes. And we'd like to enhance our community gathering places, again, so essential for the people and members of our community who don't have another active space to do that. Some of our goals, that was a great entree to what, what our next steps are, is continuing our work in community engagement and education. As you all know, what the phone survey told us is that people aren't ready yet for a bond measure. And what was fun for us, obviously, that was pre-COVID. That was interesting for me to see and made me feel really proud to be a part of our committee, was that as we received that information as a group, we were like, oh, cool, we just need to get out and educate. It was, I think, one of the members said, oh, we've lost the battle, but we haven't lost the war. Not that we're thinking of it contentiously, but that it was a great opportunity to go out and help educate our community. But like, hey, you said you wanted this in the master plan, but we need, we need help funding it. Finding all the creative ways we can to find funding and opportunities to help us further our goals. Continuing to be representative of the park, both from the information that you share with us and want us to disseminate and then also soliciting the feedback from our peers and neighbors and bringing it back to you. Continuing our proactive community ownership, really pushing to get some of the master plan implemented. Part of that was our Veteran Memorial Planning Project, seeing that come to fruition hopefully. Continued park improvements and within that, really specifically addressing our deferred maintenance and planning for the future. How'd I do? Any questions?
You did great.
Oh, good.
Questions, comments for Beth?
I'll go. Thank you, Beth.
Just a second. Can you minimize your presentation area?
There you go. You bet.
I just want to say, thanks, Beth. Thank you for all the hours that you put in, your leadership. And, and I like your approach around funding and educating and raising awareness about what we need. Thank you for your work, especially I have a heart feeling about the, these entries. And so I appreciate your enthusiasm and dedication and of you and your whole team. And the other thing too, just sitting on the Arts Committee, I think it's great leadership that we're doing more collaboration between the two committees. And it'll be interesting to see how it works, just starting off with the Veterans Memorial Park and then moving forward from, from there and some of the smaller projects too, that the Arts Committee is often involved with is overlaps with the parks, like the storm drain murals and the sidewalk art and some of the other things. So anyway, that's, I, I just thought it was a really great presentation, so thank you.
Other questions, comments? Valerie?
Oh, I just wanted, I know Beth has been really proactive in getting like a more representative group on that committee and also in pushing people to be a little more involved within the community, not just showing up to a meeting once a month. So I wanted to thank her personally for that. And I did have a question. It might be for Ross, but I just wondered where we're at with the deferred maintenance. We were going to do like an inventory of that and just wondered where we were at with that.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, Beth. Great presentation. T-Park Committee has been fantastic to work with since the adoption of the, of the Parks Master Plan and really very engaged in, in what's next. And of course, one of the things that's next and most important for us is figuring out how we take this master list of deferred maintenance projects through our asset management program that we're instituting and figuring out how and when we accomplish that work. So we're, we're working on finishing up that list. We'll be back to visit with you and present that prioritized list of projects as soon as we can wrap it up. COVID certainly has thrown a wrench into our gears on this, on this project. But we are, we are making progress and we'll be with you soon on that information.
Okay, other questions, comments? Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Beth. Great presentation. And I, I want to compliment you and I want to compliment Ross and of course, my favorite, Rich Mueller, on the collaboration and the ability to work together. As I talk to others in the metro area about parks and, and not just, we've talked specifically about baseball fields, but parks in general. And as I try to remind people, there's more to parks than baseball, baseball fields and there's more to parks than just trails. It is amazing, the stories that I hear of the friction between what groups want and what cities want and how well our community understands and gets along with not only what our priorities are, but how to, how to move forward on those priorities. And that is to Valerie, prior to her coming on to City Council and to your work and to everybody on that committee. And I, I can't thank you enough for all the time and effort that you guys put in and work towards, again, community collaboration. Because there, as you saw from the master plan, there is a lot of competing interest from trails to dog park to baseball fields. And somehow, it just, everybody's on the same page and trying to just get things done. And that, that is really a testament to your work and you're working with the city the way that you do. And thank you very much for all your work.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, oh, Ross?
If I can, if I can just add, during, during this time of COVID, T-Park has been great. We haven't, we haven't actually met with T-Park. We're meeting with T-Park tomorrow. But we are also at the time of COVID celebrating. We have completed the Follty Playground renovations. We have a brand-new playground that was selected by three hundred community members, which is fantastic. Can't wait to open up, take the fence down at that project so people can enjoy that site. The, the water-efficient irrigation system, the smart watering system at Laffkey Park is now complete and is functioning, which is fantastic. It's the next generation of our irrigation systems throughout our park that are going to save us water and money throughout the years. And then, of course, the off-leash area at Jergens Park is now open and operational. People are using it. They're using it well. They're, they're staying distant from each other. We have signs posted and a great group of, of dog owners at Jergens Park that is really thankful that that's opened up. So tho- those three projects have wrapped up during the time of COVID. And so we haven't actually been able to really celebrate those. We'll celebrate them tomorrow night at T-Park, so.
Alright.
Hey, quick question. Ross, on those off-leash dog parks, are both of them open now?
Yeah, so both dog parks are open right now. They're usable. We, we asked that anybody use them. We have some, some really well-thought-out signage on the gates that say, if you can't keep six feet apart, it really puts, puts the use of the space at risk, something to that effect. So, yeah.
Okay, well, there was some conversation the other day on Nextdoor that the city's website said that they were closed and blah, blah, blah. So I just hope all that's, you know, uniformed now and people are aware of what's going on.
Yeah, thank you. We, we did see that as well. And Kyla actually today went in and, and made a bunch of changes to our website to make sure there was no confusion. There might have been some, some wording that made it confusing, but we've clarified that. Thank you.
Anything else? Alright, Ross, thank you. And Beth, thank you for all your work on the committee.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing? Because I wanted to say, in this time of COVID-19, it's one of the places where people are still able to go, even though we're using parks differently right now. It's such an asset to the community. And I think people really feel it. A lot of the conversations that I've had with constituents have been about the parks, about being able to walk at the parks, about what a relief it's been, about how great it is to be able to go do that. And so even though we're not using the playgrounds and the parks the same that we did, they're still such a valuable resource and so important for people's physical, mental and social well-being as we physically distance and stay safe. So thanks again for all your work, both of you and, and the whole committee.
And if I may, it was a great opportunity for us to build on exactly like we were saying before that when we surveyed, right, the messages like, well, no, like if you're not this certain age with this age child, then parks really aren't the place you want to fund. And now look how that, how opportunity has presented itself for us to remind people that parks are literally for everyone. So the vast layer of needs as Councilman Morrison pointed out is exactly endemic of the fact that so many people do in fact use them and need them. And so the, the work being hard is representative of the fact that the work is important. Yeah, exactly. Agreed. Thank you, Councilwoman Burke.
Alright. Thanks again. Have a good evening, Beth. Alright, so moving on to general business, item number one. Consideration of Resolution Number 5492-20, a resolution supporting the Washington County Public Safety Levy Ballot Measure 34-296. I believe this is this Counselor Pratt and Counselor Kellogg presenting this?
This one's Counselor Morrison and I. And I don't know that, we didn't certainly prepare any presentation, as you remember, the sheriff, district attorney, at least somebody from Child Services or Juvenile Services was at our meeting in the before times, when we actually all sat in the same room and gave a very persuasive presentation about the need for this. And so, yeah, Paul and I worked together to put this resolution. And I pass it back to you, Mayor, before I make a motion to approve.
The only thing I'm, the only thing I want to say, Mayor, is that Counselor Kellogg is being really, really, really nice to say it was collaboration. I literally, he sent me his outline and I was able to change a single word. I changed this to the, it was a really nice job that you did, Counselor Kellogg. And as I told him in my email, I, he covered all the talking points. I think he did a really great job of putting that together. And thank you very much, Counselor Kellogg.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for the councilors?
I just want to say, I think it's really important. I appreciate both of your work on it, councilors.
Thank you. I, Mayor, motion to approve resolution or to adopt Resolution 5492-20?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion as second to approve or adopt Resolution Number 5492-20. I'll go ahead and, do we have to do, this is not, this is, this is a normal vote, right, Sean? This, I just go through the, all people's heads?
Yeah, just a roll call vote. Yep, yep.
Alright, okay, so I'll start off with the way I see people here. Valerie?
Hi.
Bridget?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Counselor Rob Maria? You threw me out looking at the name, but what? So Maria, you were, yes?
Yes, yeah.
Alright, Paul?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes, alright. Item number two, consideration Resolution Number 5493-12, supporting the Washington County Supporting, what? There's a typo here, I think. Consideration of Resolution Number 5493-12, supporting the Washington County Renewal of the Washington County Cooperative Library Services, WCCLS Local Option Levy Ballot Measure 34-297. I think there's a few typos in the title, but.
No, but the, the typos aren't on the resolution, correct?
Good.
Okay, so Counselor Pratt and I put this together as an extension of our service, putting together the language for the ballot measure that was in the voter's pamphlet that all of you should have received. I want to thank her for her very intense work on that, as well as Counselor Reyes, who got us in front of the Diversity Task Force and got to present there. Again, WCCLS was at our meeting a couple of months ago, so everyone at this point should be familiar with the content of the levy renewal. It provides twenty-seven percent of the funding for our local library, just from the levy, in addition to the large amount of funding it provides on the general operations. So that's what I have.
Valerie? Any comments?
Once again, on the resolution, with my overly detailed brain, I was able to find one small word change. And Counselor Kellogg did all the work on that.
That's why he's the attorney. Alright, any other questions, comments?
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 5493-20?
Second.
I have a motion as second to adopt Resolution Number 5493-12. Counselor Valerie?
Hi.
Counselor Brooks?
Hi.
Counselor Kellogg?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Changing it up so people don't get bored. Maria?
Yes.
Paul?
Yeah.
And I vote yes also. Alright, so both items of general business were adopted unanimously. Thank you.
I just, can I just say that, so the election is on, so the last day to vote is next Tuesday. So please, everybody, take the opportunity to do your civic duty and vote.
And the change for this year, people don't realize, take a look at the envelope, it's a prepaid postage. So if you can't make it to a drop-off spot, you don't even have to buy a stamp. You just throw it in the mail. It's prepaid. They'll get to Hillsboro and be counted.
Also remind people, if you haven't normally voted by mail and you're voting by mail this year, you have to get it in four days before the nineteenth, so make sure to drop it off. I particularly want to go do the. So make sure to drop it off. I particularly want to go do the, drop off for the pantry food donation and drop my ballot off at the same time. So at the library on the fourteenth, right?
Right.
Shirley, you want to give that a plug real quick?
Um, actually, real quick though, on the, for everyone to know, the post office is saying they need, they're running about five days for delivery. So you really need to have it postmarked by this Thursday, in the mail by this Thursday to be received in time. Because it's not the postmark date on the ballot. It is, it has to be received by next Tuesday. Just.
You can always drop it in the, the, our ballot box at the library by eight PM on next Tuesday.
That's what I tell people. Forget. So I'm like, don't forget. Up at the library.
All right. Terrific. All right, so we're up to council communication. So we'll do our round robin that we didn't do during work session. So we'll start off with Valerie.
I thunder in a couple of things, but anyway, yeah, vote, please vote. I was on a meeting with Ron Wyden today, a Zoom meeting. And the one thing that I took out of it that I thought was finally great is that, he's really focused. He's saying, he's talking with Nancy Pelosi about getting funding for the smallest of the small businesses. And, you know, at the federal level, a small business is a half a billion dollar business. So he's really working hard, and I think that affects so many of our businesses in Tuolotin. So I was very glad to hear that they're finally realizing, you know, Oregon is full of a lot of very small businesses. Maybe, hopefully, we'll get some funding for them in the future. I wanted to remind everybody that this is National Police Week and our police are so, we have wonderful police force. Not only are they protecting us and keeping us safe, but they're our first responders and they're out there in this terrible pandemic, you know, keeping us all well and safe. Let's see what else. Oh, yeah, it was on May fourteenth, we have, back to our mental health, there, there's going to be a webinar at ten AM for seniors for managing isolation and loneliness, which I thought would be wonderful, that we're reaching out and dealing with mental health issues in our community. And then there's also on the fourteenth at the library where you could drop off your ballot on Tuesday, an essential needs, I can't read my handwriting, hub at the library. And they're looking for like non-perishable foods and cleaning supplies. And I scored some toilet paper at Costco to break. And, you know, cleaning supplies and toiletries and things, people need like soap and probably diapers and all those type of things that people, you know, probably really need right now. Don't forget, when you go out in public, especially to stores, that it's really kind and thoughtful to wear one of these.
All right. Thanks. Bridgette.
Thank you, Mayor, and I echo a lot of what Valerie just mentioned, councillor Pratt. I also want to remind people, if you haven't filled out your census, to please fill out your census as well. And the CDC is, is recommending masks. And I just want to, you know, invite people to think about the fact that your exposure may not be that great. But people that are working in our retail stores where you're going into, that exposure builds up over time. And it's some, you know, we talk about viral load individually when people are suffering with different viral infections and how much that is. And there is such a thing as a community viral load as well, where when there's a footprint and there's people that are stationed inside these buildings, that they're at risk. Many times, even if they're young, they're living with multi-generational families, with people who are clustered in their families or friends that they live with that are health compromised. So it's some of the things that we don't normally think about, but I think it's just so important to remember. Because when people do get very ill with this, it's a very awful suffering way of dying. So being mindful and taking it seriously, I think it's just a reminder. It sometimes seems weird to be wearing a mask, but it could really make such a big difference in someone's life. And I also wanted to mention that we, you know, we're part of the Water Consortium. So the bulletin that, we haven't had a meeting, but the bulletin that was sent out recently is, they're doing promotion, raising awareness that our water is safe to drink. We have safe water. It's safe during this time. And I also just invite people to go on to our Tuolotin City website and look for the links to the Water Consortium, because there are a lot of great information about native plants. I know a lot of people are in their yards now more. People are at home more. They're enjoying their gardens. And there's watering numbers. You can sign up for watering number update. I get a little update weekly on my phone that's texted to me that tells me how many inches to water, when I need to water, when I don't need to water, to help conserve water, save money. And also ideas for, like I said, native plants and other things that are more drought resistant that also save money as well as supporting the environment. And I think when we think about now, what the bees have been dealing with, with their virus, and the way that when there's habitat loss, it increases viruses in animal species. And you just wonder how much that contributes to what we're dealing with now as people. So just being mindful about those things. And, and it's just an immensely packed website full of a lot of really great information. We have PAB meetings coming up, two business meetings coming up this month. And the Arts Committee is doing Zoom, so we're reconvening after a little break. So I'm looking forward to both of those things and keeping people updated. And I just want to thank everybody in leadership and on the city staff for all of your hard work and being able to work differently and helping our community stay as safe and as thriving as we can be during this difficult time. And the, and all the hard work on the budget. So, thank you.
Robert?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be brief. Want to reiterate several of the comments about public health and wearing masks. It's not only a kind and thoughtful thing to do, but it may be imperative for your health and others. I just get these Metro emails every day about the increase in the number of cases. And I was shocked to see today, in the last four days, the number of cases increased nine percent in our state and eight percent in the tri-county area. So the idea that this is tapering off or going away is not supported by the evidence. So continue to stay vigilant, protect yourself, protect your family and, you know, muster through it. It's difficult. I'm sure all of us are experiencing this in different ways. But the collective feeling of, you know, isolation and lack of social interaction, there are outlets for that. This meeting's been a very productive one. And I think, you know, if people out in the community are watching this, hopefully they are, you know, gaining some, some good information and some hope from this that, you know, their city continues to operate and that, you know, we are doing everything we can to address the public health crisis. Thanks.
Thanks, Robert. Maria?
Um, yeah, not much either. I mean, everyone has said and similar things that I would say and I believe in. I was in a meeting with Congresswoman Bonamichi and Latino leaders within the, Oregon, within this district that she, she's, she oversees. And it was a really great meeting. She goes a lot of information, ahah, what they're doing in Washington and how they're, how she is advocating for a lot of the community that are working like in the farms or are essential workers. And also how they're, they have different, like clinics and stuff for people to go and get tested if they need to. So it was a really informative meeting for all of us that are, that have constituents that speak Spanish only. I thought that was a really, that was very useful for me because it was the first time I ever attended one of those meetings. And I actually got a, got in and asked a couple of questions, you know, that's, that's pretty cool. Because there were like, I don't, I don't know, like eighty people on the call. And she was really good at answering my questions and, and very informative. So I was very happy to represent. By the way, they first introduced me as councillor Reyes from Tiger, and I was so mad. And I said, no, 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 no. I'm from Tuolotin. So they're like, oh, I'm sorry. So just, you know, it was, I was just very proud to be there and be representing our, our community in those kinds of meetings. So thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, just a, a couple of things real quick. First off, we didn't get a chance during the Budget Committee for individual comments. And I just, John, I feel passed on to Don, what a great presentation under obviously trying situations. But it was, it was very, he did a very good job. Second, for those of you who don't always check the Oregonian, a great article this weekend on Pack With Pride and what they're doing, Tiger Falls School District in terms of feeding our neighborhoods. To councillor Kellogg's comment, for those of you who think this is over, one of the stats that I track is the five-day moving average. And for the first time since this whole thing started, it was up for six consecutive days until yesterday. So this is not over. But to highlight the problems that we're facing with, the C four meeting that I attended last week was very interesting for a lot of different reasons. It, number one, unlike the Washington County Coordinating Committee mayor that everyone seems to, for the most part, get along, C four sometimes gets a little testy, and last week was no different. One, one of the mayors said that in six months, we're going to look back and wonder what all the fuss was about. And one of the other elected officials said, in six months, you're going to be shocked at how bad everything is. And so those are your two outlooks. And it just highlights, I think, we don't have it here in Tuolotin, but in Clackamas County, the, the diff, the problems they have in managing rural and urban. And I think those, that comment from those two elected officials just sums it all up. But mean, that said, the collaboration with everyone has been great, all these meetings. I also attended the Wyden webinar today. It was very informative and very helpful. Actually, had the opportunity to shoot off an email to Reed to try to get some, he's the chief of staff of the Portland area for Senator Wyden. To get, we're trying to get some PPE for some of the doctors' offices around the Meridian Park area. And these meetings have been really, really good at getting a lot of different people to, to assist and help in. And so, and it's really nice to see people sticking up. And, and a great example is, and again, I spoke earlier about Westland. Westland Food Pantry was able to assist the Tuolotin Food Pantry, and that was really nice to see and to hear about. That was last week. So a lot going on. Everyone's been very busy. Everybody, you know, keep up the good work.
Council President Grimes.
Oh. I'd like to, I was, I'm thinking in my mind is thinking, this past weekend being a little bit out and about more than I have been recently, and just the need for additional kindness and patience for everybody in our community. I think it's easy for people to feel a little frustrated and a little impatient and a little fed up with the current situation. And I just think it's, it's probably a time, as councillor Morrison was talking about, the prevalence of the virus seems to be moving up a little bit. It's, you know, it's probably a good time to take a deep breath and refocus and recommit to trying to keep your family and other members of the community safe. You know, please wear a mask, especially when you're in high areas with people that are essential workers and don't have the luxury of being able to stay home and stay out of homes way. And I'm going to double down and say, please treat them with additional kindness and respect and patience. Because, you know, they're working for us and working for a community as much as they're working for any retailer or grocer out there or medical provider. And I think they need all the love and respect that we can give them. The other thing that I thought was so exciting is then the message that we got that the Business Oregon Grant is going out and that Jonathan is going to be making application for the one-on-one grant. And that is something I'm so proud of that we did. You know, I'm still getting really positive feedback from community members about that grant program. And, you know, now to find this out about the Business Oregon Grant, that is just doubly fantastic. So again, kudos Jonathan and the team that put that together and pulled it off so quickly. That is just miraculous. So hopefully we'll have some more good news there. So. That's it for me.
All right, thanks. Just a few things, usual slew of meetings. Back on the thirtieth of April, attended the Tuolotin Chambers Board Meeting. And it's interesting to see the impact COVID nineteen is having on chambers of commerce across the state, in fact, across the nation. Of course, that most chambers of commerce have it scaled back, either laying people off or cutting them back to part-time. Because due to one of the stipulations in the CARES Act, chambers of commerce could not apply for PPP funds because there was a feeling that chambers of commerce are semi-lobbying firms and that they shouldn't get any kind of money to support their efforts. The chambers of commerce, a majority of them are small, you know, one to three-person organizations. And yes, they do lobbying, but they're nothing like the bigger chambers that they pretty much have full-time people to do it. So that's one of the things they're asking for a change in. If there is another version of a support package that, that chambers be able to have access to PPP money. And the other, just like the city's facing, the chambers got to decide, some of their bigger events are coming up in the fall and the summer. And, you know, what do they would need to cancel to stay in compliance with the governor? My League of Oregon City calls on Fridays. If you attend those also, it just amazes me how they pack the agenda. I think they pack it too much, that you're getting updates for at the state level, the county level, the federal level. And you're also hearing the advocacy that's being done by the National League of Cities on behalf of cities to the, the, to Congress. To, you know, make sure they're working super hard, are trying to gain some funding to state and local, mainly local governments. As many of you know, one of the items that came out of one of the relief bills was dollars to state and local municipalities. But you had to be five hundred thousand people or greater. So only a handful, not even a handful, very few cities in, not Portland, I'm sorry, very few cities in Oregon got it. Luckily, Washington County did, Moana County did, the City of Portland did. And shockingly, but under that, the formula, Clackamas County got nothing. So that's one of the things that they're trying to regress, and Senator Wyden is very passionate about trying to get that money. We'll see if that helps, if he can get it through. Because there's a lot of cities and like ours, who are putting a lot of money and effort and stuff that, you know, ideally, we'd like to get backfilled with and get those funds back, because it's taking a lot of time and effort. Washington County Chair, out of Shreve County, Catherine Harrington continues to have her meeting with the mayors of Washington County on Mondays. Today was an interesting one in particular because they laid out the reopening plan for Washington County. And of course, the mayors had quite a few questions about it. Biggest one is, when did the county envision being able to apply to reopen or hopefully have the county itself reopen? And the best estimate by the county right now is early to mid-June. And more like mid-June, because one of the things, one of the requirements they have to hit is they have to have a hundred-plus tracers onboard and staffed so that these folks can do the background tracing of, if you're in a restaurant and you get COVID, they got to figure out where it came from. And it's not a simple position to fill. They've had to go out to recruiting agencies that have the capacity to bring a hundred-plus people onboard in about two to three weeks. The other monkey wrench in this is that of those hundred-plus hires, twenty-two of them need to be nurses. You know, have fun hiring a nurse right now. You know, have fun hiring a nurse right now. Yeah, well, the money is there from the feds, but it's just a matter of nurses are not sitting at home bored right now. Pretty much every nurse I know is working and then rest of them are paraprofessionals. This, this is a way more complex job than I think people realize. So that's predicament under that, ideally, they could have people here in Washington County in three weeks. Then if you have read lately that we're in a health region that includes the three metro counties. But it also includes three coastal counties. So Clatsfield County, Columbia County, Antima County are all part of our medical health region. So all six counties pretty much need to be ready in unison to reopen. And so the question went back and forth about, well, what if one county is not ready? Can you open? And technically, the reading is that you could, I know, if County X wasn't open already with all their paperwork and met their marks. It couldn't hold back the other five counties. But the public health folks are saying, you know, in a public health standpoint, that's probably not a good idea. That if all six counties aren't ready. So they had a six-county meeting this afternoon to try to hash it out. And see where the counties are at as far as their reopening plans. And the last thing from Washington County is tomorrow, Washington County is going to have a new page in their website. On their Washington County reopening process and have some markers and will be updating it daily. To see where we're at as far as opening, because you guys are probably just like I am. The number one question I get is when are we reopening? When can my business start? You know, one is when can I start business again? And two, you know, what's the process? And, you know, walk me through these three phases of what this means because people are still confused and it isn't entirely clear. On these three phases, I just tell people, we just got to get to phase one first. Don't worry about the other two phases because phase three is far, far away. And phase two will only be, you know, we're only going to get there about three weeks after. So phase one's where we got to focus on right now. It was mentioned before, the census, please, I know everything a lot's going on. You should have gotten a postcard. Ideally, you're getting some follow-up mail because the census takers are not going door-to-door right now. They've delayed the deadline for the census, I believe, to October. As of yesterday, the national response is fifty-eight point six percent. Oregon's at sixty-one point four. Twalton beats the state average where it's sixty-nine point eight. But I love to have this at eighty-plus percent and Tiger's at seventy point four. So Mayor Snyder and I have been, you know, beating the drum that we'd love to see Tiger and Twalton have an eighty percent plus response rate. Because there's a lot of money involved here for the next ten years for infrastructure, medical. Community enhancement that, you know, if we can get our numbers up and show the amount of people who live here. That's more money to come our way because if you don't, if it's not in the census numbers, you're not going to get it because that's how the feds allocate money. On a sad note, Mayor Mays lost his sister last week. She passed away. This is only sibling and so if you cross paths with Mayor Mays or Sherwood, just let him know that you're aware of what happened. And he's taken a step back right now to help out his niece. Because now his niece has lost both his, her mother and father. So. And then finally, I want to people, remind people of our council rules and what you say in meetings. It's gotten back to me, some people are saying things at meetings, especially. That, you know, my terms are out beyond their skis, that they're being, throwing out suggestions. That City Council hasn't even discussed or talked about. And next thing I know, I'm getting calls about saying, you know, you have five hundred thousand dollars you're going to give to Tiger Twalton School District. How are you doing that? And I'm like, what are you talking about? I see Paul's laughing because it's Paul.
And that's not what I, that's not what I said.
For this, but it did get back to me and just, I mean, it's not bad to have an idea. But something like that, you might want to vet because that one went circular quick. That had folks call me, you know, saying, you know, if you've got a half million dollars laying around, you know. And your budget's so solid, you know, why don't you, you know, lower your taxes and stuff? So just be, be aware and be careful what you say because sometimes it will nip you in the butt. Anything else? Maria?
I just go back to the census part because I did get a few, just maybe two questions from the, some of the, I was just putting it on my counselor. Facebook page and they just say, well, how do I do this or what can I do? So I kind of just send them to the US Census Board, US Census website and have them fill out. I'm like, if you got the stuff, you know, if you got the mailing piece, make sure just fill that out or go to the website that's asking you to fill it out. And, and then, but I feel like it needs a little bit of more promotion amongst the community. Maybe like if we can continue posting it on Facebook, doing that diversity task force will help a little bit with especially. Those who, you know, they're still uneasy about it or. That confidence that it's important for us. I try to do it, but sometimes, you know, when it's on a different page, they tend to be more responsive. Just, just a suggestion.
I think, I know, I don't know if Sherlin wants to get into it, Jerriann Thompson at the library is the lead on getting the word out about the census. And of course, pre-COVID, there was a lot of publicity things were going to get done and events and get togethers to get people to complete it. But they've had to rethink. Do you want to talk about it, Sherlin, and all some of her efforts and having revised the plan?
Yeah, so we got a grant from the National League of Cities to do some additional marketing. Which pre-COVID nineteen, we had planned on doing a big event at Affolati Park. Along with the playground reopening and we were going to have a food truck and all kinds of cool stuff. Of course, we had to rethink all of that. We are printing up flyers and some marketing materials. That will be inserted in the Pack With Pride backpacks that are going out. As well as a couple of other distribution points, the food pantry. And I'm trying to think about where else those are going out. The lunch distribution sites that the Tiger Twalton School District is doing, which they're doing in at. Twalton Elementary and a couple of apartment complexes. So we are utilizing the money that we got from National League of Cities grant to try to do some additional marketing. To the, the populations that are historically not, not responding as, as significantly. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I, yeah, lunch parties, the lunch on the back. I guess really smart. Thank you. And I, I'll also continue to promote it, but trying to get them to do it. I know that it just requires a little bit of push and they'll get there eventually. Thank you.
Part of it is, people don't know, and this is just because you get, you got, I've gotten in the weeds on this. Is that you really don't need that postcard? You really need that number that's on the postcard? You can do your census by phone and answer a couple of questions and they'll figure out and that, there's no person at the other line, at the other end. The computer will figure out who you are and your census number and you can complete the census on the phone. You don't have to do it via computer or fill out a piece of paper. That's one of the other challenges that Jerriann's having is that the library was going to be a census.
Right, yeah.
Meeting point, if you will, and they were going to have folks there could help, multilingual, help you complete the census and that's out the window. So a lot of best-laid plans or went sideways. And ideally, maybe, I know Washington County Library Services is talking, they're beginning their reopening plans. And maybe the library is open in a little bit of capacity in late September before the census is due. And folks can get in and complete their census at the library.
Right, because they did extend the census to what, October? From July.
Yep, because one of the things we had a presentation on that forgot to mention is from Washington County Library Services on the amount of work. The county's putting into a plan how to reopen libraries. And then each library director has to come up with their little, you know, their plan and how, particularly to their community. And it's, you know, to me, I, you know, also when I saw all these details, I'm like, holy crap, things I didn't even think of.
Yeah.
At the library, you know, you know, as a group thing, if you will, all the directors right now on the high level. Of how to reopen the library system and then Jerriann has to figure out how to customize that for the city.
Yeah, and so Jerriann and the library staff have been working with WCCLS on that reopening framework. And Jerriann is working on like what that means locally. And we plan on bringing a presentation back to you on May twenty-sixth at your council meeting about that reopening framework.
It's, it's really interesting because it's the amount of detail, like I said, it was just overwhelming what all things you have to think about. But I'll say, you don't, don't want to be, you know, don't want to give it away their thunder. So anything else?
Thank you very much.
And I think that was, yep, that's everything I had.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to second the adjourned meeting. All those in favor, just say aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Alright, Nicole, have a good night, everyone.
It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you all.
Bye-bye.